Thank you, Michelle. It is the April tenth Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I will make a motion to approve the agenda. Any comments or questions? All in favor? I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty seventh minutes. And I understand there's an amendment to the awarded bid amount for the spring and fall cleanup.
Yeah, there was a, I'd say glitch in the pen bid. System where the bid that the bidder put in was actually counted twice. So the actual bid is twenty eight dollars and forty-two cents a yard.
Okay, so a motion and a second, all in favor? Pat, could we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, immediately before this evening's public meeting, we're managing executive session to discuss litigation and legal. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Okay, and there was also an executive session on April second to discuss personnel. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am?
Hello.
Greetings.
How are you? So basically, hi. So this is concerning the food truck ordinance in Little Springfield Township.
If I may, can I ask who you are, please?
Oh, I'm gonna present.
Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Ben Yonan, and my mother is Ben Yonan.
Nice to meet you.
The owner of Tringart and Soul cuisine of food truck here in the township. I'm, I manage the food truck for my mom, and I'm here today because we're deeply concerned about the current ordinance and the proposed changes that are affecting businesses like ours. Right now, food trucks are only zoned to operate at the flea market, and after restriction alone is unfair. So just, you know, the restriction of just being in that flea market, you know, is unfair to other food trucks that are coming up into the township. It limits where and how we grow, and it puts a cap on the full potential of what food trucks bring to this community. I've tried openly, well, my momma tried opening additional days at the flea market, but the food traffic is just isn't there. I want to, well, we want to open more often, serve more people, and grow our business, but the ordinance makes it nearly impossible. What's even more frustrating is that being at the flea market comes with a non-compete clause. These clauses prevent us from selling certain types of food if someone else is selling similar items as well. That cycles creativity and pushes innovation and punishes innovation. As I've said in the words, we should be encouraged to bring fresh I eat into the table and not be told what we can and can't cook based on who's nearby. On top of that, the plan to move food trucks to the back of the flea market only makes things worse. Visibility and food trafficking are key to our survival. If people can't easily see or find us, we lose business. It's that simple. We also rely on essential, essential infrastructure in our current location, such as water, electricity, and for my mother's food truck in particular, internet connection for our P O S system. Losing access to those basic necessities would mean extra costs and major destruction for not only to our food truck, but other food truck owners' operations. Recently, we were offered a chance to collaborate with a local brick and mortar business, something that could benefit both of us. But because of the current ordinance, I, we can't make that partnership happen. That's a missed opportunity for innovation and community growth. I'm asking the township to reconsider this ordinance, and we're going to find a solution that actually supports small businesses like ours. Food trucks bring life and culture and economic value to communities, and we just need the freedom to do what's best. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And if you, if you wouldn't mind, could you please leave your contact information so that this way zoning can get in touch with you also? Because if I'm not mistaken, there's also, you know, ordinance and allowance for special events that are for them to hear.
A special event. In our case in particular, a brick and mortar store, like, you know, a, a business. It comes and saying like, hey, if we work together, you can have your food truck outside of our, our business. And it would help food traffic go as well for us and their business. But because of the ordinance being only for special events, we can't do that. And there's other food trucks that have been coming into the area, but now they're just parked in storage, and that's like not making money. And the rent right now at the flea market is so high, we're barely breaking even. Like, they're not doing enough to advertise, right? We're doing our own advertisement, but you're paying rent, we're only open on the weekends, as I said in, in my speech, that we try opening during the week, but nobody can tell that we're open, even though we did the advertising and we went, you know, and did more, but it still wasn't, you're not close enough to the road, you know, that kind of thing. So when we had the opportunity and I called to find out, and then I called again, and my mom's like, can we try something else? And I was like, okay, probably can try to save the thing that our ordinance changed, and that's why I'm here today. So, thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you for attending, we appreciate it. And if you wouldn't mind, just make sure before you go to give us your contact information. This way we can continue the conversation. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that has a public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, next we're up to announcements, but I did neglect to amend the agenda to include the community and department, excuse me, the department and committee reports. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna go a little bit out of order and ask to approve an amendment to the agenda to add the committee and department reports. Sure. Comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, in that case, I will make a motion to accept the community and department reports.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? And these reports are over on the side, and we also include them in their entirety with the minutes. And that said, just a couple of announcements. You can check out the new exhibit over at the Community and Cultural Center called Spring Break. It's all about the resorts. A nostalgic look at all the resorts that used to be in the area. The spring newsletters are out, so if you missed yours, there's some over on the side. Congratulations to the Poconos Club. Their opening day is April eighteenth. I believe, Mike, you have two announcements, the Township Cleanup in Thousand Feet.
Yeah, we have Township Cleanup, which is tomorrow and Saturday from seven to two, both here and in our Wooddale locations. And we also have Thousand Feet Street, which is April eighteenth.
Okay, and congratulations to the county on a successful Founder's Day, first time that happened. We wish to thank the Rotary Club of the Greater Poconos for all that they've done for our taxpayers and doing a divided free tax preparation program over at the Community and Cultural Center. On April fourteenth, which is Monday, if there is anyone that is connected to EMS or fire or a municipality in any way, PSAT, the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, is having right here in this room a free class regarding fire and EMS trends. And there will be a solar class that they will have on June third for all municipal and county officials and staff that covers utility scale solar, what it is, how to approach it, and all of that. And that's it for announcements unless anybody has anything else. No? Okay, so correspondence, is there any correspondence? All right, and that brings us to the Treasurer's Report.
Motion from our General Count, two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion for our sewer count, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and three dollars and forty-seven cents.
All second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Solicitor's Report.
Thank you. The first item under my report is the Raide Investments Conditional Use Decision. As the boards where you had, I believe it was two nights of testimony at the conditional use hearing for this application. This application is for a property located at two hundred and six Fantasy Road, New Stroudsburg, PA, consisting of a number of parcels that are proposed to be consolidated in accordance with the application decision. You have a written decision before you, it's been reviewed and revised a number of times between the last hearing and this evening's hearing, in this evening's meeting. We have a current time extension for action until, I believe, April fifteenth of this month, so it is ripe for decision of the board. I do see the applicant's counsel is in the audience this evening, I don't know if he has anything to add, but the draft written decision before you is a conditional use approval with a list of conditions associated with that condition. Conditional use approval, conditions one through thirty-one associated with that application. The application again is for a resort complex master plan on the property. Are there any questions of me before? And again, this is a conditional use approval decision, subject to thirty-one conditions set forth in the written decision.
I have one.
Yeah. Yeah.
I see Charlie's voice, are you questions or comments?
Once I make the decision, then it's all my calls.
Any other questions or comments from the audience, the public? Seeing none. Unless there's any questions or if you want to go through a little bit more in detail, I think you can proceed with the motion at this time.
Mark? Okay, motion second. Any comments or questions? Mark has made the motion, I've made a second. All in favor?
Okay, what I will do is I will leave the written decision with Michelle to be signed by the board at the very latest tomorrow, because it does need to go out to the applicant and applicant's counsel tomorrow latest. Okay? The next item under my report is the Blue Ridge Cable Right-Way Agreement for eleven Onside Drive. I did get a response from Blue Ridge late last week or early this week. They are agreeable to my proposed changes to the written easement, but we are still waiting for their revised sketch plan, which is an exhibit to the easement. So.
Oh, thank you, Charles. It's good to see you.
So I'm okay if the board wants to proceed with a conditional or conditionally authorizing the easement to be executed subject to Blue Ridge providing that updated, more specific exhibit. So once we do get that, assuming it's okay with the township engineer, we can have it executed and recorded at that time. Any questions, please? Ben, you have anything on?
Nope, I have nothing else to add.
So then, the motion would be to approve this conditionally pending the revised exhibit from Blue Ridge Cable. Make that motion. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay.
And that's all for my report that's on the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben, we're up to you, and the Central Sewer Odor Control Agreement. So just by way of explanation, and Ben, you can correct me, because I will oversimplify it. The original, we had tried an original odor control company, and their system was going to cost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to control the odor from our sewer system on Route two oh nine, and it still had spikes in it. This new treatment is something that would be placed at several points along the system and would save roughly four thousand dollars a month from our current system that is only in one pump station.
How much a month?
Four thousand. That it would save, you know, on chemicals and all of that if it, if it works. So according to Joan's notes, this has a startup cost of twenty-four hundred dollars and doesn't require power or an abundance of space, because I remember we were looking at huge trailers that we needed space for with the other system. Our current system is a chemical additive, that's what we've been using, and the price of chemicals has gone up dramatically. This is an organic solution that eliminates the odor-causing bacteria rather than releasing the odor, which is, again, I'm oversimplifying what the presentation to us was. So now we've got this agreement in front of us, and then you made some good suggestions of what should be added to it, and I believe you've discussed it with Pat.
Yeah, no, I, I think you gave a pretty good overview on that and that, so thanks for the introduction on it. Yeah, I circulated earlier this week the proposal from N R P Products, I always get it mixed up with NPR, but yeah, N R P products. And it's, it's for forty-two hundred a month, and that would have, it's four treatment dispensers at pump stations, four, five, six, and ten, which have been, that, that's the section that's had the most odor issues over time. I think I just add that the township's currently already, as you kind of mentioned, they have, you have a treatment program in place. You know, and that's averaging between seven and eight thousand dollars to the township a month. And the challenge with that one is they're only really set up to add in the product at pump station ten, they're trying to get the trickle-down effects as it passes through the system. The real issue is that it dissipates in its effectiveness as it gets further down, and when we, we checked with them, trying to stick with the, you know, the people that we're currently operating with, it was going to be a hundred thousand dollars for a new injection location, you know, just to stick with the same product you currently have. So that, that's what led us to, we've looked into a couple other options that have worked to varying degrees, but also presented some issues, and then, you know, substantial upfront costs. I think the, the, the big benefit if this works to this approach is they, they have a setup where they can put battery-powered dosing instruments inside the pump stations at kind of distributed locations, and then they basically ship a concentrate of their product. Proster could get trained on how to, it's just a dilution with water, and then they're able to basically fill these up on a monthly basis. Right, and Dave Schultz from Proster and I, we met with him, it was either late February, early March, walked, took a look at all the pump stations to give him a sense of, you know, what we're dealing with. This is the treatment program that he's recommending. My one suggestion when I circulated it was that, you know, the, the, the language in the proposal, it's pretty short and doesn't talk about timeframes for this. Per my conversation with Pat this morning, we were talking through it, I think our thought was kind of consistent with my initial recommendation is to put a timeframe on this of, you know, I'd say somewhere in three to four months, give it a chance to demonstrate that it's working effectively. You know, no long-term commitment for the township on this. It also would simplify the bidding aspect of it, you know, they, they provide a product that I don't believe anybody else is at this time. I, I'm checking with him on the patent status of it, we can follow it with that, but you know, before any type of long-term commitment gets made, let's actually confirm that we're, we're seeing the results that they would expect us to. So with that, I, I guess my thought would be, you know, I'm open to any questions you might have, but I think the motion would be to authorize Pat to review the proposal and offer his recommendations on language for the contract before the township would sign anything. And maybe give it, give that revised proposal consideration at a future meeting once it's agreed to by N R P.
And maybe to include in that, if you did have a, if, if you want to include a specific timeframe that will include a term provisioned in the agreement, it would just be a term of X months. I don't know. Ben, I don't know if you had a suggestion, the number of months would make sense?
I think we talked about May, June, and July, three months, right? And hopefully getting it up by May.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously we'll have to see how quickly we can get the revised language turned around to them and have both parties agree to it, so May might be aggressive at this point. But I think if you're hitting June, July, August, you're still hitting the core part of the summer, right, when this stuff's most problematic, so.
Well, isn't, isn't it, in your word, problematic? In more prevalent in the winter?
No, in the summer.
We haven't, we haven't seen that, and, and Dave, and Dave has likewise been noting that, and typically, the bacterial processes slow down in the winter, so you don't get as much of the hydrogen sulfide produced, the, the gas in the winter months.
That was the problem we've had, is that we didn't have the volume in the winter even.
Right, yeah, so I guess, I guess you kind of have conflicting issues there, right? So yeah, I guess you could potentially, if you had, I don't know, a large resort community that's largely unused over the winter, there could be occasional slugs come through that could be problematic. Now, I will say, well, in our meeting with them with N R P is that if this works, again, one of the benefits is it wouldn't be difficult to add in a couple more locations in some of these more remote residential places to get the benefits. That, that was a challenge we were running into with the oxygenation system, was that they were, it was effectively treating the force main. The problem was if, and I, I think, you know, goodness, one of the resorts, their, their individual pump station, you could tell when it was cycling on that the odor would spike periodically, and then it would come back down. So like, the, the main trunk line of your, your system was getting treatment, it was when some of these, and, and the only way to really effectively treat that is to have dispersed treatment. And so this is, this has been the only one that we found that has this type of approach where it's economical. So I think it's worth giving a shot.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the, the use of this at all. I mean, I think it, you know, whatever we can do would certainly be beneficial, but, I mean, I, I would suggest that the, the the beta test would be for twelve months instead of just picking the summer months.
No, the, the complaints come in starting May. That's when the complaints, we get the bulk of the complaints during the warm weather. The warm weather, we felt, was the stinkiest.
Pat, what's your, what's your, because we, we were talking through, you know, the, the bidding, the bidding threshold for this.
Yeah, I think you're gonna need a response from them as to whether or not, number one, it's patented, if they're the only game in town, if they, they're the only ones that provide this technology, we need to know that in order to make that determination.
Okay, so I can follow up with the answer on that, and if that's the case, then twelve months is on the ta, you know, on the table without the need for, for bidding, which, you know, is a more costly and timely endeavor.
Agreed.
So I will follow once I have the answer on that. I, I certainly, I certainly get your point, Mike, certainly get it.
Okay, so I'll make the motion as, as proposed. I, I would, I would still, my opinion, I would still go for a three- or four-month trial period rather than committing ourselves to twelve months of the expend. You know, but anyway.
And Pat, I think, I think we could probably settle on the terms, the, the month, once we have an answer on the patent issue, and you've had a chance to make other tweaks, right? So maybe we.
We wouldn't be more prudent just to table this and not have any motion at this time?
Do you need to authorize Pat to?
We need to authorize Pat to review the documents and to make the.
By motion?
I usually don't jump on things unless you want me to. The, the agreement, I, if it's, I'll be honest with you, if we're gonna keep it to a short term, my additions will probably be scaled back a little bit, it'll be, you know, in indemnification provision, the term provision, maybe a termination, maybe the fact that the jurisdiction in Pennsylvania, because this outfits out in Kansas. But other than those, if it's a short three- to four-month period, that might be the only, the, the, if this is more of a year term, you know, my additions might be a little bit more involved, but either way, I'm fine. And to be honest with you, if, if you do just do a three- or four-month term, it doesn't prevent you, if it works, right? You'll, I guess you'll know, and if it works, it might be then, okay, let's do a long-term.
Okay.
Yeah, so I. So I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to review the contract and make the changes as stated.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am?
Mark, if you'd like to breathe a few, because as, as you said, if the smell comes in from basically the hottest lunch, that means that you would know definitely if it worked. Then it's not like to say, oh, we're January or we're March, where you're not smelling anything, then in those summer months, especially during the time the tide, sewer is gonna smell, then you make sure that, whereas before you jump into making final decision and express in a short-term decision to then make the final decision, and it also would save money. But if you can find like another company that's been possibly doing cheaper or some, you know, but I definitely agree with what you're saying.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Well, thank you, and we came upon this because our sewer manager read an article in one of the trade magazines and said, why don't we try this? I mean, we were all going with this half-million-dollar solution, so kudos to her.
Yeah, it's a small, it's a smaller company and doesn't, they don't do a ton of marketing. I, I know that they have some big contracts and do work in Cincinnati, so they, you know, they have experience in this, so, you know, we're, we're hoping that that, you know, trends towards success for us as well. But yeah, Joan, it was a great recommendation on her part. Well, I guess we'll see how this goes, and then we'll be able to.
Well, I like it anyway, I like the initiative. Well, thank you, Ben, and happy birthday.
Ah, thank you, appreciate it.
Do you have anything else on the engineer's report for us?
Um, no, no action need on this, but I guess a quick update. I've been in contact with John Motts about the GP five application for the crossing at Big Ridge Drive, where we're trying to get the force main off of that bridge. He has everything he needs, I think he's basically said everything looks good, so I'm expecting that permit to be issued any day. PA Americans is, they, they have to revise theirs a little bit because of changes that they're making, so you know, we'll see how much longer until they have their permit issued, but, you know, obviously we can start having conversations about bidding that workout, you know, with the, the grant that we have in place as well, and making sure that that gets, that gets put into effect with this project.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Old business. So we have Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau grant applications on here. We introduced it as new business for the last meeting we had on March twenty-seventh. Two applications were submitted, and as my dad said, we spit on them for good luck. The other thing on here is the revitalized two oh nine grant reimbursement for the Dutchman property was also under new business on March twenty-seventh. And at that time, the supervisors preliminarily approved the reimbursement pending the required paperwork. And we've received the required paperwork and proof of payment. I see it's not in tonight's bill list, but we can do an off-cycle check for that. Unless the board has any comments.
Well, I'm just a little concerned the plants that are built up there. I mean, I, I've got a view here with no leaves or anything, where I'm looking through branches at a vehicle. Like you, you're more of an expert at this than me, but, you know, how does that, how tall does that grow?
It, it grew, well, you've got a master garden there sitting next to you.
I'm looking across the street at tractor supply and everything is low.
But this is the beginning of the season.
I, I know.
And, and it grows.
So we're gonna have a site problem.
I, I don't, well, the plants that were planted were on the list. And they were on the, um, proposal that were submitted that we approved.
Okay.
If there, and I agree with you, if there's a site issue, just like there was at Newtown, we can address it.
I mean, looks like.
It, it, so Tom X is a good example. That's what it would be. So. It, uh, I understand your concern. It looks a little bit close to the road in that. In that thing, but in that picture that you have there, but, um, the island is similar to what Tom X has and that's what I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I mean, it's done now, so, you know, look at that.
Yeah, and the paperwork has been provided, the cancer checks have been provided, so unless anyone says anything now. Uh, the instruction would be to do an off-cycle check for the reimbursement.
Well, my concern with this is, is that actually $10,000 worth of work out there. It doesn't, to me. It certainly doesn't look like it. I mean, you know, she has mulch and, um, some drugs here and, you know.
So everything that was on the invoice and the three quotes, there were, there were three quotes that were similar in price. And everything that was listed on the quotes is what was done. So if you price out, um. Two-inch caliper trees that she has, they're eight to 10 feet tall, but well, Ed. That's a considerable expense.
I think it's a very expensive project.
And what we expect? What do you mean by expensive project?
Well, just like you said, it doesn't look like, you know, it would cost that much for what's there.
Well, all I can say is the board approved. The invoices, uh, the proposals that you received, and they were all similar in price and they were all similar with what's there. So, uh, at the last meeting, the supervisors approved the reimbursement. Based on the plants that were listed on the invoice that the board approved.
No, right, we preliminarily approved.
Based on receiving the cancel check. And proof of payment.
Uh, uh, again, I, I just.
Would you like to discuss this at a workshop tomorrow? And you can review all the paperwork? Because, uh, I'm looking at the packet.
Yeah, it seems like one, I have page two of two, but not page one or two on the Primrose document. I don't know.
So they were, uh.
Five of six, but not six of six on.
To win.
So I'm not sure. You know, so there's, there's pages missing here. I have one, six, three of six. Five of six. So this must have been double sided, but it was copied on one side. Right? No, it's grouser.
Well, and it's the grouser quote you've seen before. You've, the board has seen the three quote.
Like one of six.
You have back rates, but you have three, two, two. Not double sided. This is double, municipal double sided. Yeah, that was.
So in June of last year, the board. Preliminarily approved the landscaping project based on the invoice of the quotes. With all the plants listed that you have in the packet. You received three written quotes from three landscapers, all with similar pricing, all with the plants listed. And the board approved that. So that was the project that was done. At the last meeting, we've preliminary approved the reimbursement, the fifty percent reimbursement. Of the lowest quote amount. Based on receiving, based on receiving the proper paperwork, which would mean the council checks, which is proof of payment. And that is what we've received. If you would like to refresh your memory and look at what we approved in June, we can certainly, we can do, we can do that. At our workshop session tomorrow.
That's fine. I think, you know, you have. I did see expert testimony that, that agreed that this is, it doesn't look like ten thousand.
Did you examine it all? Did you examine it all?
No, no.
Do you know what's there?
The, the, the basic price. Versus, uh.
And some of it you can't see, some of it you can't even see yet. Ed's mad because he wasn't one of the original. You also cannot, would you agree that you can't see some of the stuff that's been planted?
Well, no, and, and that's, that's part of the issue.
Right.
Right.
No, I'm not questioning that.
All right, moving on. New business. Uh, we're up to you now. Uh, resolution four dash twenty twenty five dash one. Requesting support for inclusion of Delaware Water Gap Recreation Area Local Communities as a Gateway Community Pilot Program. Under the Explore Act. So would you like to say the words or Pat, would you like to, you've made some changes on this?
You know, I, I made a few revisions, uh, to the, I guess, the draft resolution that was provided. The township, nothing really substantive, just, uh. Revisions to the resolution.
You made it, Freddie? You made it, Freddie?
Would you like me to speak first?
Sure. You came all this way.
Fine, it's, it's a, it's a nice effort. Um, for the record, my name is Tara Mazanati. I am the I A six eleven municipal liaison. For many of these, um, Delaware Water Gap communities. Uh, so what, uh, an opportunity presented itself when somebody realized that this Explore Act, which was passed in January. Providing an opportunity for Gateway Communities, which is what we are. You are a municipality that borders the Delaware Water Gap. National Recreation Area, just like Norton does on the Jersey side, just like Upper Mount Bethel does, where it. Uh, six eleven goes from, um, uh, Delaware Water Gap. Down, people think that's Portland there, but that's actually Upper Mount Bethel before it gets down to Portland. You know, individually, three counties, we are Gateway Community to the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area. So this Explore Act, I'm just gonna read what it is. Expanding Public Lands Outdoor Recreational Experiences Act. Seeks in part to foster and encourage responsible recreation on federal and state recreational lands and waters. With an emphasis on enhancements to recreation areas, long-distance bike and hike trails. High-volume non-federal public lands, and by mitigating negative visitor impacts on infrastructure and local communities. By providing financial or technical assistance to a gateway community under existing program. And to enter into private partner, uh, private and public partnerships, cooperative agreements and, and such. So, uh, at minimum, by becoming one of these private programs, we would have a seat at the table in what sounds like. A national program to quantify visitors. Right now, how many, how many people driving on River Road or getting from, I know, but my, my daughter swam up at Cleveland. I was coming down River Road, yes, because I enjoy driving through the scenic route and avoiding two oh nine. But was I really a visitor to the gap? What, you know, similarly, the commuter on eighty. Are they really visiting the Delaware Water Gap and the traveler on six eleven? So we're in a unique situation where, you know, if nothing else, maybe we serve the rest of the country. By having such complicated realities. Um, and be a part of what may become the national standard for how to measure. The actual, quantify the actual visitors and then the impact to these communities. We are impacted. You know, when it overflow, um, at Smithfield Beach, comes onto River Road. It, it overs everybody up. I'm speaking to just your, your resources. When our, when the fire and rescue that serve our communities. Are out on the river or up on, on our, in our case, up on the mountain or serving to hikers, they are pulled away from. The communities for which they really volunteered originally to serve, knowing that we're a park. But that's not really what they were originally set up to do. So, um, it just seemed like a great opportunity. Ten communities are going to be selected as per the legislation, that's what it suggests. Um, so right now, what we have in support is started with Warren County. Um, Warren County passed the first resolution. Our Congressman King did, um, did immediately send a letter. So that has gone to the Department of Interior Secretary requesting, um, that we be a part of that. Um, so that's in Oldton, Blairstown, Hardwood on the Jersey side. Just past was Upper Mount Bethel, Portland and Lower Mount Bethel. Monroe County, that's hopefully you, uh, Smithfield Township, Stroud, Burrow. Um, and then we're going to your counties, Monroe and, and Red Hampton. Um, I don't think we need the county, but, uh, support for your congressman, um, to write the support letter. I do know that Congressman McKenzie is going to provide a letter of support. Um, I provided the packet to them. So we're gonna put our, put our good fight, you know, where we jumped on this. Within twelve months, they're supposed to identify the, the communities. We said, why don't we just jump on it and not wait for. However, they're gonna get around to notifying communities that such a thing might be there. We're hoping that by raising our hand, it makes it easy to choose best. Oh, that's what I have for you. And thank you very much for being with me last weekend and putting the details in here.
Yep.
Such as approximately four hundred, four thousand two hundred fifty acres. Of Smithfield Township, which includes prime farmland. Leased by the National Park and eighteen miles of roadway within the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area as a part of Smith, Mills Smith. Smithfield Township. And those numbers were provided graciously by the county. So thank you for giving those numbers to the county. There you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It talks about overcrowding in different spots, but we have, what, what's that, our road? That was getting closed.
The drive?
I mean, drive, yeah.
No, 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 the dirt road that was getting closed.
Freeman Track?
Freeman Track.
I didn't, I didn't.
That should, that should be added in there, I think, shouldn't it?
Would you, would you like me to amend the resolution to?
I know, I mean, I didn't hear much about it last year, but the year before it was one of those things where they closed the road on the weekends because of parking down there.
Right.
And emergency vehicles couldn't come and go for river rescues, you know.
And, and that's the background of the point of it, right? Um, um, so is it permissible to?
Can we adopt it as amended?
You could, your motion could, uh, approve, uh, the resolution with the revision of adding.
Freeman Track.
Something about Freeman Track. Okay. Okay, would you, um, can I reach out to you tomorrow last month?
Uh, it could be a simple, if it's a simple ad, Michelle, you have the latest version. If, I don't necessarily, if you're just adding. A few words to reference the location for overcrowding.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work on this.
I will make a motion to authorize the purchase of a two thousand and twelve Hemsworth Single Axle Plow Cup of the, from Adam Township. I get it.
Um, Frank, wait, Franklin Township.
Franklin Township, Adam County.
Second.
Uh, and how much is it?
Sixty thousand.
It was a motion and a second, all in, uh, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to authorize entering into the frame of capital coatings for the, uh, roof at Billingsdale.
Sure.
Okay, now it's, uh, comments and questions. Um. I, I would prefer to table this until we can look into getting. A new metal roof, because if we're going to pay seventy thousand dollars for that roof. I would prefer to get, if it's possible to get a metal roof over a metal roof and get a brand new metal roof. That has a forty-year warranty rather than a paint job that has a twenty-year warranty. So couldn't we do that homework before we, uh.
Well, like I said, I mean, I know you, you said metal over metal is commonplace. I never run into it. In my career, but, I mean, I don't, I don't know, and I, I've asked. A roadmaster, he's, he's actually installed metal roofs. Uh, he's never heard it either. I mean, I, I see if you search on the internet, there's companies that do it. Um, but it also says it's very labor intensive and it's very, um, finite as far as putting metal over metal. To make sure you don't lock in any kind of, um, moisture, uh, et cetera, so. I, I, I wouldn't advise it. I, I don't know it well enough to, to advise it. I mean, I've been doing it for over thirty-five years now. Um, and I certainly would not recommend metal on metal.
Well, uh, we do have, um, a, a local roofer that does it. And there are several examples and references of where he has done, this, this one guy has done. Metal over metal, uh, successfully. I mean, so far, my experience with capital coating. Is that in twenty nineteen, we had them paint this roof.
Correct.
For nearly ninety thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then it, it leaked and we had to have them come back. They had to come back a couple of times. I'm not complaining, but they came back and fixed it.
The valley is over here, actually.
But if we're going to, if we're going to spend seventy thousand dollars to repair the roof in the back, I mean. What's the big deal of taking another week or so to, to talk to somebody?
Well, do you know the contract? By all means, get, get some information. I don't.
I did, I emailed you his contact.
Review.
But it had his, it had his contact information, the number on it, so. That's all I'm saying. I mean, it's, we might as well spend the, we, we could afford to look into it and. Maybe there's others that do it too.
I, I'd say, I, I've been doing this for thirty-five years. I've never run into it, but.
Who would you entertain speaking to someone who's done it and the references of somebody? Uh, of some of his customers that have done it?
Well, I mean, as an alternative, I mean, but I, I would, um, again, stand by authorizing this, um, subject to. Discussions with a metal on metal roofer.
Well, why don't we table this and for the next meeting, right? We can table this until the twenty-fourth. And that gives us two weeks to talk to, you know, to do some homework on this. Because if we can, if we can, look, if we, yeah, because if we can get, if we can get.
So I'm making a motion that we just table this.
I'll second. You know, I mean, after all, if we can get.
Right.
A warranty for forty years on a brand new roof, I'd rather that than a twenty-year warranty on paint.
Um, always open to learn.
So, okay, motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Yes.
The maintenance, the garage.
The one that has the metal roof in the back with, there's several, uh, on Sterling Court, several buildings on Sterling Court. This is the one with the metal. How old is that metal roof? Do you remember?
Twenty.
Uh, in two thousand and six, so nineteen years.
Right.
Yeah.
So that certainly didn't last for forty.
Yeah, I don't know what that was. All right, well, so motion and second, any comments or questions? Uh, yes, ma'am.
So when you say metal on metal, you're saying that they're gonna put another roof on top of an existing roof?
Yes, in the same way that you can shingle over shingle, put a metal roof over a metal roof.
So they can't just replace the whole thing?
Replacing it would be more expensive.
Or give metal or, but.
No, like standing seam.
Yeah, like standing seam, though. I I don't, like I say, I I have to get educated how to do metal on metal. You know, because you have those valleys and you have, you know, typically you have purlins, and then you nail or screw the metal to the purlins. You know, it's cap, so. I mean, I don't know how you take. You know. I mean. Correct, you have the weight problem and everything else, so I don't know.
Well, we already did a weight load on all the roofs back here from when we were investigating them for solar panels.
Okay.
So we already did a snow load, so if they can take solar panels. It could easily.
Solar panels aren't attached to the roof.
But they're heavy.
Yeah, but they're not attached to the roof.
They are.
Well, I I they're connected to the roof, but they're not attached, it's not integral to the roof structure.
We, I was talking about weight, weight and snow loads, we did all of that to see if it would, so if it, if it could accommodate a heavy solar panel.
Well, like I said, I'd be interested to hear what.
Okay, all right, any other comments or questions on roofing, or how to get in heaven, or anything? Okay, all in favor? Aye. You made the motion to table it.
I made the motion, right, and I made the motion for discussion, correct.
Okay, all right.
I I think this is just a, you know, just a delay, that's all it is, I mean. You know, I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and I I I acquiesce to your.
Well, I appreciate it, Mike, I appreciate your hu- humor in me, thank you.
Certainly.
Um, does the board want me to hold, I haven't looked at. The contract, you want to hold off on?
This is a co-star.
You might, yeah.
It's it's co-stars, uh I would suggest uh reaching out to make sure it's also prevailing wage.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think the next one's you also.
Uh motion to authorize the sale of a two thousand and six Dodge Ram truck. Uh with single ply roof.
As much as it sounds, I'll second it.
How much do you think the, well, what is the minimum gonna be?
We're not gonna have a minimum, we're hoping to get someone to actually get on it.
Hopefully get somebody to come and take it.
Right.
Does it run?
How much do you think?
They they've got fast inspections. I I if we make fifteen hundred bucks.
Rachel said, you meant fifteen and.
Yeah, I mean, honestly.
Just you talking about it costs us that much, Pat?
Now, everybody in the public knows.
Well, we sold that truck to Delaware Water Gap for what?
A dollar.
Dollar, right?
Yeah. Maybe I can tell it to them.
We have success in selling things for low prices.
I I'll go with it, I can see I can tell it for a few bucks.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second, uh any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh any public comment from anybody on anything? Yes, sir. Nice to see you here.
I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging the good works of our brother in law. That was actually from, done by our president, so if you don't mind, I'd like to also tell him, I didn't know. You've acknowledged some of the good works.
Yeah.
Here we have one, that's what we do as our teammates, and I'm a monster, very good, very, very cool, so, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Mitchell. Uh any other public comment? Yes, sir.
So I think um. I'm from the townhouse, above the Tom X Road, and it's funny, you had that uh meeting. Last uh, or the twenty-seventh, and you were discussing the noise ordinance. And there's been this uh, the past three months at least. Someone drives up and down the road, really, really loud muffler. Uh it did seem to be driving up and down. Uh Sellersville Road, up and down Tom X Road, I think they go back towards the known, if anyone else has heard it, I'd like them to speak up. Because I hear it all the time, and they're way above, like, what would be considered normal festival level. So, I mean, this to me is like a little bit of burying in the fact that, you know, it's not a static position. Where it's like happening to someone's home, but he does it regularly, all the time, wherever it's driving, it's vehicle. I can hear it all the time, and if it's annoying me and I'm all the way. On Tom X Road. Like, could that be an instance where, like, maybe you you mentioned you might have a monitoring device at the festival levels? Because it's really, really loud. I know the people in my community, too, that they. They're trying to figure out, like, who this is and where they live, is this an instance where we could, like, maybe ask this local state police to come in? See who's doing this, because it's it's really a nuisance.
Yeah, it's, for something like that, it's it's likely not gonna be the township's code official, if it's a, if it's a moving vehicle, the state police. Is probably make the call, we have an ordinance in place now, that if they're violating that ordinance, the state police could enforce it, but there might be a state statute. He's gotta modify, you know, they they can modify their mufflers in a way that, I think there's state statutes uh for a certain types of modifications as well. Uh but when it's a moving vehicle, uh your state police is probably the. The appropriate response.
But they would enforce the mobile workers.
They could, whether or not they're gonna do that, it's the state police, it's not the, it's not township police department, so. Uh they'd be able, it's it's uh it's an ordinance on a book, it's a new, it's going to be a township, but.
I think there's this.
So I think that would be a motor vehicle.
I think there's a motor vehicle. Correct, and that's what I'm saying, I I don't know for a fact, but I'm fairly certain there's a statute that prohibits or at least. Restricts the ability of someone to to modify their muffler system to make it loud.
It's definitely been modified, because it's the engine's loud, muffler's loud, and they do it intentionally, they just wanna drive around. It's free, it's fine, I get it, they wanna have fun, but when it's all the time, like, five times on the evening, on Friday, Friday night, during the week. People are trying to make the sleep, and it's like ten o'clock at night during the week. Um so, just really aggravated, like. If they could, you know, figure out who this person is, because. They drive up and down Sellersville Road all the time, I'm sure it wouldn't be that difficult to just. Close the state police, be there on the corner, settle a little Tom X and probably figure out who it is, but the point is, like, what law would they enforce, and I. Figured maybe I'll just ask to see if that would, would the township, the new ordinance would be enforceable, but like you said, more than like that, it's conceived of being more of a violation.
It it sounds to give a handle on what times it's happening, so if you get, you know, if you get a timeframe where you can. Let the state police know, I'm sure they're not gonna wanna have somebody there for a whole shift, but if you have a two-hour window or. Or an hour window, you know.
I know they've been there, because I remember years ago. We we met a group here, and we went up to um. Look at a location for the community gardens, the cop is right at Sellersville.
Right.
And Tom X, and he actually pulled somebody over for not stopping at the stop sign.
I I know, I've seen him do that, that's it. Yeah, I live right around, I live like west quarter mile away.
Right.
Yeah, they they have been there before, but lately they haven't, and I'm like, you know, it's so.
They're making their quote, they're making their quota, so they don't need to. Sit at the stop sign.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh any other public comment or questions on anything? Uh we, no one on Zoom, so happy birthday to you, Ben, once again, on Zoom. And have a joyous Easter and a meaningful Passover, everyone.
Motion to adjourn.
Your questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Happy night, Ben, happy birthday.
Thanks, and then.